Welcome to our special council meeting today, Wednesday, July twenty third, two thousand and twenty five. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and pass it to Clementine for roll call and to share announcements to the public.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rash.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And public comment and participation information is provided on our meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov slash agendas. In person attendees, please keep your electronic devices and phones muted to prevent audio interference, and thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Clementine. With that, I will pass it to Dr. Barber to kick us off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Again. I would like allegiance to comply in the United States of America, to the Republic, as we stand, my nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Dr. Barber. With that, we'll go to our public appearance item. Number one on the agenda is to amend and resubmit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development the draft fiscal year twenty five twenty nine consolidated plan and draft fiscal year twenty five twenty six annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program to comply with federal executive orders and authorize the city manager to make administrative changes requested by HUD. But that'll pass to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you read it absolutely correctly. We are under the gun to comply with federal executive orders, and that is the intent of this agenda report, and our housing manager, Anastasia Wyatt, will present to you a brief staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present. Thank you. On May sixth, you approved our action plan, annual action plan and consolidated plan for HUD, and we received notice back from HUD on Friday. We have six days to make these amendments and provide them back to HUD by tomorrow. So HUD is requesting that we remove any DEI equity statements from our plan, which includes data that we are taking out, and that is presented to you today. And we, this, all of the changes in the plan meet, we also needed to make assurance statements that meet the executive orders required by this administration, and we have also, within the plan, not changed any of the important funding recommendations that were approved. It's these administrative changes. That concludes my report.
Patient.
No questions?
Seeing none, we're going to open up for public comment. So for those that are maybe unfamiliar, I'm just going to share with you how public comment works. We identify those that want to speak during public comment and beginning of the public comment period.
We identify the folks that want to speak during public comment at the beginning of the public comment period. Once those folks are identified, we close it off, and only those folks get to speak. So at this point, I'll check with folks on Zoom. You can navigate your way over to the raise hand function. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and do a countdown for folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And there's one on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and take that public commenter, give them their three minutes.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Just a short point. It's kind of ironic that we just made a big deal about acknowledging the indigenous settlers and, you know, because of what was going on with the new one hundred percent affordable housing that we're building, and now we have to put up with this basically steps back a century with this DEI thing because of the current administration. Hopefully, it will be reversed soon, but it is pretty embarrassing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Esther. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for motion and deliberation.
Make a motion.
Is it moved? Let's wait for a second.
Yes.
Is there, all right, it's a moving second, and Dr. Barber, please.
Yeah, so, of course, we want to be in compliance with federal government, but I do want to echo the sentiments of what our public speaker just said, that it's sad to see when we talk about non-discrimination, and we're doing exactly that by this motion. And so I'm hoping that we can be able to see and understand that when we talk about equity and when we talk about diversity, we're talking about fairness. And so when people take that and try to manipulate it, I think it's unfortunate. So I hope that this is something that we are able to look into ourselves to see what needs to happen as far as moving forward, so that we can be in unity and not division.
Well said. Anybody else? Okay, with that, go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, but that will move on to item number two to receive. Thank you, staff, for your work on that. I know that that was a quick turnaround, and appreciate your work. Receive, so number two is to receive updates and provide guidance on matters relating to boards, commissions and committees. The first part is for governance policy changes that will provide for a mayor, vice mayor subcommittee to interview and nominate applicants. The second part is to process for dissolving the Architecture Review Committee. Third is potential combination of the Historic Preservation Commission with the Museum and Cultural Arts Commission. And four is potential term limits for members of boards, commissions and committees, but that'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that we present to you in hopes we receive more feedback about them, and then at a very near future meeting, we will bring it forward for a vote. So with that, I hand it over to our city clerk, who is the mastermind of all those proposals.
Thank you, Hans. So as you read in the staff report, we have four different things to discuss. The first is the update to the governance policy, and for background, on June seventeenth, the council voted unanimously in favor of forming a standing subcommittee that would conduct the interviews and nominations for applicants to the city's boards, commissions and committees. So we've presented the draft policy for your preview and for any comments, and that is in the packet. And I'll just go through the, the changes are, it includes the subcommittee that will conduct the interviews and noticed public meetings. All may attend. Anyone from the community may attend and comment. It expressly provides that interviewees may attend remotely, and it includes nominating residents to outside agency positions such as the TMC Bike and Pedestrian Committee that currently we don't really have a solid setup for how to do those recommendations. What stays the same in the policy is everything else. So the outreach methods, the reappointment requirements, the factors in how to evaluate applicants and make the appointments, and the fact that the council is the one that makes the appointments. And so we also have plans for implementation beyond the council policy, which are, I would like to schedule the first subcommittee meeting to develop any desired standards, such as any interview questions that you want to standardize or the length of time for each interview. And then also the city clerk procedures will be developed for supporting the subcommittee, including the council had specified they wanted there to be scheduling flexibility of at least two dates for interviews for applicants in case the first date doesn't work for their schedule. And next is the process for dissolving the Architectural Review Committee. In June, the council voted in favor of combining the ARC into the Planning Commission. And so staff is currently working on writing an ordinance that would dissolve the ARC and transfer its duties and powers to the Planning Commission. And for something like that that involves the zoning ordinance, Planning Commission review is required. So a tentative earliest possible schedule with the proviso that we may need to push it by a meeting or two would be for the Planning Commission to hear it in August, then council having its first and second readings during September, and and as if the schedule happened that way, then thirty days later in August, sorry, in October sixteenth, the ordinance would go into effect and the ARC would be dissolved. And also, for your information, currently there are three seats on the Planning Commission to be filled. One is an unscheduled vacancy that's been vacant since March, when Commissioner Fletcher resigned. Two are regular terms that just would have ended on June thirtieth, but our code does provide that members serve until they're reappointed or replaced. So we've been holding off on that until the subcommittee is active. And any Monterey resident may apply and be considered for seats on the Planning Commission. Third, the update for the potential combination of the Historic Preservation Commission with the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission. The other priorities from the council were higher on our list. The council did ask us to bring this back eventually, but we're not ready to do that yet. And we, we will at a future date. And then lastly, in the special meeting in January, the council workshop, it was mentioned the potential to provide term limits for boarding commission and committee members. And so staff is wondering whether the council has a majority interest in that, and if so, if you would provide us guidance and direction. And so in summary, we'll be bringing the governance policy back to you in August. The ordinance dissolving ARC will be coming to the council as early as September, possibly October or later, depending on how that goes, and then HPC and MCAC combination is on hold, and we're asking for feedback on the term limits.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I know there's a lot of work going on in the background to get this all to happen. Appreciate your efforts there. Right, council, any questions to explain? Please.
I'm not doing good today with my mic. Dr. Barber.
Yes, I know. Last time when we talked about the process of dissolving the ARC into planning, I had questions, and I still don't have the answers. And, and that is, we were, I was asking about the Melrose, and we were talking about some of the other ones, even with the historical HPC and the MCAC, but specifically, I was trying to find out about the Melrose and how that would actually transfer how that looks. And I know you guys want to bring back the ordinance that will show us more, but I have questions of how that would look and making sure that it's seamless and that everything is taken care of, because in some cases, I don't know whether it actually collaborates well. So I'm just trying to see how that would look, is my question.
For the Melrose, or is it possible we're talking about the Mills Act? Or?
Yeah, the Mills Act, right?
Yes, the Mills Act, I'm sorry.
Okay. And would you be able to, my understanding is the Mills Act review is through the HPC, is that right? Okay, so that's through the Historic Preservation Commission, so that wouldn't impact the.
Right, so that's why I say I'm talking about all of them, because I had questions when we were talking about combining all of these. We were combined, talking about the ARC and the planning, and we were talking about the HPC and the MCAC. So one of the questions I know I had asked back then was dealing with that, and I was just trying to figure out how that would look.
Well, so if I'm understanding the question correctly, then it's about the potential combination of the Historic Preservation Commission with the so we're not ready to, we haven't prepared recommendations or background information on that combination yet. That's one that would be coming forward at a future date.
And the same thing with the ARC and planning, that's, you don't have any specifics on that yet as well.
So, so the specifics that I have on that, and please jump in if, if I need any update or correction, is that right now, the plan is the ordinance would sort of dissolve the ARC and say that now the Planning Commission is the ARC and transfer the duties and powers to the Planning Commission. So it's still all the same things that the ARC does. It would now be the Planning Commission doing them as the ARC.
So I guess my question in my, my, my head sense last time was because some of the things that the ARC does and some of the things that planning does isn't necessarily going to be the same type of qualifications that you may look for for the different commissioners that may come forth. So I was trying to see how we were going to, to, to attempt and approach to marry that as far as when we look for qualifications, because with the ARC is going to be very specific in the skill set, and with planning, it may not be. So I'm just trying to see how that would actually work.
Could I just add a follow up to that, if I may, Dr. Barber? What I recall from that conversation was the idea of maybe having a suggestion or a preference towards two of the planning commission seats being architects, not that it would be a requirement, but that would be the preference to try to help make sure that we have that representation on the planning commission to help fulfill that background and experience needed to make those decisions. So.
Yeah, we can, we can bake that into the ordinance, and additionally, I think this is going to be a multi-step process, because initially, I think the priority is to just dissolve the ARC and get the Planning Commission up and running in place of the ARC. We also plan to streamline some of those duties at a staff level. A lot of that is state mandated and requires ministerial approval at the staff level, but those updates are going to take some time as well as updating all the specific plans. And then finally, our charter does reference the ARC, and so at some point, we will probably propose a charter amendment just to correct the language.
Okay, so it sounds like it's, like you said, it's a two-step process of making sure that this kind of transfers correctly.
Right.
Okay, and then with the other piece being baked in to have some of those qualifications on the Planning Commission would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Please, that's my rash.
In the agenda, it mentions that with the subcommittee for nominations, there'll be duly noticed meetings that may be attended and commented upon by all. This might be more of a question for Chrissy. What about a third non-standing member, third councilperson goes and listens and wants to comment? And actually, I've had that question about going to other committee meetings. Sometimes I go to Planning Commission, and I haven't said anything since I've been elected. I did before, but would you just instruct on that? Sometimes I go to the sports, the recreation committee meeting.
Right, so it's a little different when a standing committee consists of less than a quorum of the city council, so there's different rules that apply to that than would apply to a council member's attendance at a planning commission, for example. So at a standing committee meeting, like the one that's been approved by the council to interview candidates for filling positions on our boards and commissions, the entire council can show up but cannot participate or comment in any way. You can only attend as an observer. The public, however, can attend and comment. So that's the distinction there. At other meetings, you can comment on the item of business that is being discussed, and if a quorum of the city council is there, that's okay, because it's an open and public meeting, but you're not to discuss city council business at that meeting.
Could I ask a follow up question to that? What if it's something that's in front of the Planning Commission or the ARC currently that comes to the council in our semi?
Quasi judicial capacity?
Yes.
Yeah, that's even yet another layer of rules. And in that instance, I would recommend against any sort of participation, because we don't want to give any appearance of predetermination or bias or sentiment in one way or another, because if it ends up being appealed at the city council level, you need to have an, an open mind and and that would be the rationale behind that recommendation.
And that's specifically what you mean, if it might be appealed and we've shown our hand.
Right, yep.
Makes sense.
Right.
A follow up. Why, why with the standing committee, I mean, what, what's the legal logic to having the third or fourth or fifth council people not able to comment? I mean, you've noticed it, you, you know, I'm just trying to wonder why.
Because then it would be a council meeting, and it's not noticed as a council meeting, and then the council, if the quorums are participating, then that could be a Brown Act violation. If there's a desire to have three or more members involved in this process, then I would recommend that the city council just don't, you don't need a standing committee, the council can just do the interviews.
What's that?
So you wouldn't have the, if, if there's a quorum, at least that wants to be involved in this process and speak and ask questions and participate, then I would suggest not having a standing committee, because you wouldn't be allowed to do that. And instead, the applicants could just come before the city council.
Uh huh, which we considered and did not choose.
Correct.
Right, right. Okay, I think I've got it. Thanks, Chrissy.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I want to go back to the ARC collapse in the planning commission, and I want to make sure I heard you right, as you were saying. ARC acting, planning commissioners would be acting in ARC, and I think you're talking about concept that there are certain things that ARC is doing that we need to continue doing. But in title, we're talking about having a planning commission and collapsing ARC in its entirety, and any responsibilities that ARC currently does or needs to do would transfer to the planning commission.
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to understand and make sure that, you know, what I, what I know to be the case. And how many members do we currently have of the ARC?
Well, it's a seven-seat committee, but there are a couple of vacancies. I didn't bring that information. I think we currently have four or five members on that committee.
Okay, and I understand we have seven, seven body on the planning and two vacancies and, and, or one vacancy and then two that are up for reappointments.
Yes.
And.
One of whom I know does not plan to reapply.
Okay, and do we currently have any architects? Engineers, and I'm trying to get a sense for the question we may go back to is, should we require, and that would be certainly the council choice to direct, do we need to have an architect be on the planning commission? So it's a staff question. Is it essential we have an architect on planning? Or do you feel that we would have experience on the current planning commission that would have enough experience that would close that gap?
So we actually have an architect currently on the planning commission. Dan Fletcher resigned. He was an architect, and then Terry Latassa is a local architect. I would recommend that the ultimate composition of the planning commission include one to two architects. A major you know, part of their workload is to review construction plans, and they tend to review the most complicated plans. They're going to be looking at cut and fill diagrams, and and even though we explain that and engineers explain that, it's oftentimes very comforting, I, as I watch them debate where the, you know, an architect or a second architect on the commission can say, yes, that's right, but like, maybe they have a third way to explain it. So it's not required, but I would recommend it.
Okay. That's the only questions I have right now.
I know one of the things, oh, sorry, Councilmember Garcia, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'll ask a couple of questions. Do we know if ever in, in the history of the city, there have been terms for these boards and commissions?
So there's always been terms. What's happened, at least during my career here, is as the person has reapplied and their term has expired, most often than not, they've been reappointed.
Sorry, yeah, I meant term limits.
Term limits.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm not aware of any. I, I didn't specifically research that.
Okay.
I can, if you want.
Okay, no, I was just curious if you had that information. And, and in, in thinking about moving forward, has there been any thought in terms of what would be the, the length of, of the term? That would be more appropriate in terms of maybe like a specific cadence, right?
I think that would come from the council if that's, so this came up from the council's discussion. It wasn't a staff recommendation, and so we would be asking for that kind of guidance from you.
Right, I, I was just curious if there might be is some kind of cadence that I guess is, is what am I trying to say? That, that works best for staff, right, in terms of continuity, right, of the work that's being done, or I don't know, anything that it might be relating to something that I, I'm not thinking about, right? Is, is there like a?
Are you saying this in a way like to make sure that there are folks that have served on it for some time, and it doesn't come to a point where everybody's replaced all at once?
Yeah, yeah, something like that as well, right?
What happened with NCIP? Where we, we all hit the same end date, so everybody had to reapply, and then there was this huge load on the mayor, and
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, and the reason we currently, we have a cadence, I think you're talking about the terms.
Right.
And the terms we currently have are all not at once, and they're, and they're staggered. So they're, they're four-year terms, and they're staggered.
Exactly, yeah, thank you for that, and, and there is a cadence. So I'm wondering, in, in terms of limits, right, is there a, a specific timeframe that may be staff? And you may have not thought about this already, I'm just posing the question, and if it's something that we still have to think about, that's fine.
I would think if, if the benefit is, if the benefit you're concerned about losing is the long-term experience, then then I can't think that there would be a recommended term limit from that perspective.
I guess I'll just say on, as you are aware of, major policy documents require a considerable amount of time to prepare, like the housing element, the general plan updates. And we're talking at a minimum two to three years when we start to finish that project. So if we get new commissioners midway through, just as I'm sure you may be experienced at the council, there might be a learning curve. So that's, that's the only cadence issue I can think of is it's nice to have continuity on a particular policy issue as we work through it.
Yeah, Mayor, can I? Yeah, sorry, let me just make, are you, and we're not debating at this point, so if you have questions. Yeah, sorry, let me just make, are you, and we're not debating at this point, so if you have questions, but then we can come back to this.
No, I just, I just wanted to, to make sure we understood on the cadence, your word, but the cycling. And they're all four-year terms on the Planning Commission.
And they're staggered.
Staggered. And so after this year, when is the next time for appointment? When is the next ones up?
June, so we all, all the terms are ending on June 30th depend of, but the, but the year varies. And so we have folks each year whose terms are ending.
Okay, so basically every year, there are some members of the Planning Commission that are reaching the time to be reappointed.
Should be.
And I would just clarify one thing too, it's not uncommon for folks to not finish their term out. And so then there's interviews that are done.
Right, mid session, yeah, mid cycle, which is, you know, obviously things change, if people move or they just, they're tired of it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. So there's kind of a opportunity for appointments that come pretty frequently.
So, thank you. One of the things, going back to the Planning Commission, ARC combining line of effort. One of the concerns that I recall having with staff on this was some of the things that are in front of the ARC get appealed to the Planning Commission. And so how are we addressing that piece in this interim phase?
Well, so once the replacement goes forward, all appeals will come to the city council.
And there's no issue with that as far as us approving this today? Or through the next set of processes with the Planning Commission and the, and the council?
Correct, and it won't be implemented until all those ordinance changes are made. But appeals will go from the Planning Commission to the city council, instead of from ARC to Planning Commission to city council.
Perfect, all right, thank you for that. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open up for public comments. So for folks on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. In the meantime, I will check with folks in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber, if you wish to speak on this item, just ask if you can stand up to the left of the podium. If you prefer to remain seated, if you could just identify yourself by raising your hand. Two, four, six, anybody else? All right, so we'll cut it off to the six in the chamber and we'll check with folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have three on Zoom. Mike, are you wanting to speak on this one? Okay, so we have seven in the chamber, I'm just going to edit that and we'll go ahead and cut it off there. So let's go ahead and start in the chamber, please.
Kurt Tipton, I'm the downtown rep for NID. And I want to start by first shouting out to Sarah and the staff at Scholz Center. I just taught a class for seniors there for the smart driver footfall. But the way that staff interacts with the seniors, we should be proud. So just that. As far as term limits, in reality, you already have term limits. I saw Mayor Clyde term limit somebody. You, Mayor, also, not necessarily the word, but term limited. So during the interview process, you have that ability to term limit somebody. And in the end, case of the NCIP, there are neighborhoods where it may be very difficult to get somebody else from that neighborhood to serve. So again, you, you need to be very careful with the term limits. And I believe you already have that in place with the new process, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I think the concept of term limits is a good concept. I think the reality of it is something different. And, and I'm against term limits. I think the potential for losing good and needed people is, is a real issue. So anyway, I'm against that, but thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amy. Hello, Mayor and Council. I just have a suggestion. It's so frustrating when you're coming down Franklin Street and there's a red light and a green light and a red light and a green light. I was just wondering, is there any way you could make it so that all light, all four lights are green?
I apologize, that's not the subject of this item on the agenda, unfortunately.
Okay.
So we can't take public comment on that. But you can come to the next council meeting during the general public comment period and share.
I thought in the weekly it said it was just a general.
Yeah, no, this is a special council meeting. You can also, you could also write into us and we can, and take in your feedback that way as well.
Email.
Perfect, thank you so much, and I apologize for that. No worries.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williamson and Councilmembers. I'm hopeful that moving forward, if the council needs more time to address city issues and concerns, that a permanent extra meeting will be noted on the agenda calendar instead of a special meeting with only 24 hour notice. The items on today's agenda, agenda are of interest to the public. And without being scheduled for a regular meeting, today's meeting could easily go unnoticed and reduce public input. This action could be perceived by the public as the desired effect. I would also like to address staff direction on the potential to establish term limits for the board, commission and committee members. By creating term limits, this removes experienced people from positions that they themselves had to learn. Replacing someone solely based on a term limit does not elevate the board's ability to make wise and considerate decisions. It is not always easy to find qualified people who are familiar with Monterey city codes and process. Expertise and understanding of issues are an acquired asset. A removal of more experienced board members can lead to an increased reliance on city staff for information and direction. I am not suggesting lifetime appointments, but it seems that applicants should be able to apply at the end of whatever term. And if no other qualified applicant applies for that position, why should that person be required to vacate their position? This leads to a loss in leadership, knowledge and professionalism within each board and increases the role of city staff in the decision-making process. It seems that a decision based on an applicant's qualification, not tenure, could be determined during the interview process by the standing subcommitting prior to any appointment. I encourage the council to reject term limits on boards, commissions and committees and honor the knowledge and commitment of all those who have served. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Councilmembers, Pat Benz, Monterey Vista. I don't feel strongly about term limits, one way or the other. Until you mentioned today that how many vacancies are currently on these commissions? And if we have these vacancies, I think we should be excited to take the people who are already there and who have committed to the job and keep, and keep using them. It's important to have continuity and experience. It's also important to have variety and new thoughts and new people. But not at the expense of getting rid of somebody just because of the term limit. Thank you.
Hello, Council and Mayor. My name is Nancy Soulay and I'm on the board of the Old Town Neighborhood Association. When adopting new procedures for committees, please consider that the Neighborhood Community Improvement Program differs from all the other commissions. As the stated purpose when set up was to represent the needs of different neighborhoods as opposed to the other commissions that represent the city at large. I know it is a stated goal to involve more residents and I appreciate the city policy to solicit, to solicit online applications for the vacant positions on boards and commissions. When set up, the intent of the NCIP program was for the representative and alternate from each residential neighborhood to determine what the needs of the neighborhood and to what extent projects citywide have support within their neighborhood. Although the current proposal is for the mayor and vice mayor to conduct interviews in public and recommended appointment and then recommend appointments, this one committee needs to have different criteria in the selection process. I propose that the NCIP applications include questions and answers that would be published online for the public. This gives applicants time to reflect on their neighborhood involvement and the neighborhood information about the applicant in order to weigh in on. This was especially important in the last appointment process as three of the candidates were unknown to the neighborhood. They had not and still have not been in touch at meetings or events to get involved, even with the contact information for the neighborhood on the city website. I suggest you include in the NCIP application the following questions with responses posted online for the public to see. One, how do you plan to work with your neighborhood to hear the residents' concerns and priorities? And to give feedback from the city NCIP meetings? Two, have you, have you ever been involved in your neighborhood? Three, are you aware that the majority of the committee's work is condensed between February and June annually? As projects citywide are analyzed, discussed, cost estimated and voted on? Does this work with your student, work and personal schedule? Four, have you attended an NCIP meeting? I think the residents and the council have the same objective, that of an involved citizenry working together with the neighborhoods. Let's make it happen.
Mike Brassfield here as a citizen. Mr. Mayor, Council. First of all, KISS, keep it simple silly. You're already establishing a sorting process when you're going to be doing the interviews. To add a extra layer of sorting, you want to put term limits, I suggest to you, you only need one. The other part of it is some of these positions are knowledge-based. When you go into the Planning Commission or NCIP, you have to pick up pretty quickly what you need in order to operate. And that includes for the Planning Commission, going through all the general and specific plans to learn what they are. Because you're going to get it in the face if you don't. So it is acquired knowledge. And if you're sorting out these, these people, the people with some knowledge, I suggest to you that we're already having problems getting sufficient people to apply for positions. We're seeing that this, we're now, because of the cost of living, people do not have the time to put to these tasks that you're asking them to accomplish. So my suggestion again is keep it simple. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go to our callers on Zoom.
First, I'm calling on Esther.
Hello, everybody. I don't see a problem here with the term limits being put in place as long as there's a caveat in there that if there are no other applicants to be considered, that the people who are already there can stay. So I don't, I don't understand, I mean, unless that concept hasn't been discussed as part of the policy going forward, I think that's a solution to all these, you know, concerns. I will say that I think that they're important to have term limits because if you're only going to have the mayor and the vice mayor deciding, we've seen in, with the past administrations that when certain people are on the council are on the same page, we could end up with a similar situation of having people on a committee or a commission for a decade, like what we've had in the past. So I would say, you know, as long as the, the term limits don't disqualify somebody from being able to continue serving, if nobody else that is qualified comes to the table, I don't see any problem with, with term limits. I would also suggest to anybody who's interested in getting on a commission that they buddy up with the person, the people that are on there now and, and understand what it's about and how it functions. In my neighborhood association, we essentially have board members be on the board for at least one term before they can move into a presidential position. And that shows number one, interest, number two, gives them a preview of what to expect. And I don't, I don't imagine that somebody who wants to apply for a board position that has no idea what it does or has no interest, wouldn't take the time to educate themselves on it before applying for it. So I, I do think that term limits are a good idea just because I don't want to see what's happened in the past with cronyism and other types of things that went on from allowing limited council members to decide how long somebody can stay on board, even if we had good qualified candidates that, that apply. So I don't see why with that caveat, that if nobody applies, that someone can stay on, that, that should be a problem. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tom.
Thank you, I'll start by expressing my support for option B, since nobody else has spoken to that. So I'll go on to the term limits issue. I think that Kurt Tipton said it great. I completely agree with Kurt's comments that you already do possess the ability to limit somebody's term, assuming that there's another candidate for that position. So I don't know, you really do need the term limits. But if you, if you do decide to go down the path of term limits, I agree with what Esther's saying, which is that the incumbent should be able to apply for that position along with all the other people. You may get some other candidates other than the incumbent, but the other candidates may not be desirable at all. You know, just, I won't use any names or examples, but just imagine that you got three people, one is the incumbent and two others are people who are just obviously not qualified. I mean, why wouldn't you want to give yourself the ability to reelect the incumbent? Term limits aside, let them serve another term. So those are my thoughts, thank you very much.
And our last speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine zero two.
Good afternoon, this is Nina Beatty. First of all, I also want to echo the previous comments that 24 hour notice to a special meeting is completely inadequate. It doesn't appear that there's any urgent issue on this agenda. And it's important for the public to have adequate notice to read all the materials and prepare for these meetings. Secondly, I, as I've said in the past, I oppose the Planning Commission and ARC combination. The apparent justification is the streamlining, essentially ramroding projects through that's coming from Sacramento mandates. And those Sacramento actions are stripping local jurisdiction and authority for city projects. That serves politics and special interests, but it doesn't serve Monterey. It does, doesn't serve the other communities in California. I am aware, I see from staff, the different presentations, that staff expresses support and concurrence to giving up Monterey's authority. And I don't see any protective actions to preserve local authority, including legal action to protect this community. Ministerial improvement for land use projects does not serve Monterey, and that's obvious. Neither does combining the Planning Commission and ARC. And that appears to be done simply because staff is saying there's going to be ministerial approvals from now on out. I don't, this is a very, very disturbing direction of Monterey. As I've said in the past, my father served on both ARC and the Planning Commission. And I saw through those meetings, all the different issues that were, that he was confronting and the commissions were confronting. And the, the dance, the, the very delicate issues involved with appearance and making sure that codes were enforced and all those things. But Monterey looks like it does or has looked like it does, simply because there was careful planning involved. And lastly, I'm disturbed to hear that new, some new NCIP members are not being in contact with their neighborhood associations or with their neighbors. These, that's the primary reason for the NCIP committee is to have input from the neighborhoods, from the people there, not one lone wolf who's speaking for themselves. So I think that that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, open it up to the council for motion and deliberation. Let me just start off by addressing, there was two public commentators that identified the last minute agenda being posted. And I would share that I think this may be the only time since I've been on the council. And if it has happened other times, it's very, very rare that the agenda is posted this late. The count, the city staff are incredibly good at getting the agenda out in advance. In fact, as of late, they've been getting the regular council meetings agenda out the Thursday before as opposed to Friday. So I want to give kudos to staff for their work there. The reason why this one was delayed was because of this last minute thing that came down from the Trump administration on Friday. And staff had to work back and forth on getting that report ready so that we could get the agenda posted. So we leveraged our flexibility in the 24 hour requirement for special meetings. So I just wanted to be able to explain that there's no intentionality around the agenda being posted this late. And for whatever it's worth, we apologize for the late notification there. As far as the agenda item, there are four items. And, and for ease of kind of going through this and not jumping all over the place, I'd suggest that we go one by one. So let's look at item number one, which is governance policy changes that will provide for mayor, vice mayor, subcommittee to interview and nominate. for mayor, vice mayor subcommittee to interview and nominate applicants. We can discuss it. We can entertain a motion.
For number one.
So there's been a motion. Is there a second? It's removed and seconded. Any of the discussion on this one?
Just a question.
Please.
So as we um, it's, it's a proven the guidance of what we've already acted on by a previous council meeting. So it really, there's no change on this topic from what we talked about already. I'm seeing, I'm seeing a nod.
Is there consensus?
So that was a question I had is why, why are we, why are we taking a vote if we already voted?
Okay. So I got acknowledgement from a city attorney that consensus is fine. So everybody's on the same page here?
Yes.
All right. Number two, process and dissolving of architecture review committee.
Uh, I have a comment.
Please.
I, I think it's a good thing, and I know that there's some angst in the public. But I think that we've heard from a variety of folks that are doing the job. We've heard from staff and I've viewed many meetings in the past and seen everything from their, their work, their process, their voting, things that come to us on appeal. So I've, I'm very confident that this is the time to make this decision because it's not just consolidating, but it's actually what government wants to look for. In my view, is not a duplication. And any opportunity we have to streamline the process where the public is not forced to have to go to multiple layers for action, I think is a good thing. So I, I'm in favor of it, uh, but we're going to talk about the nuances of that and the board components on the next, next items. But uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the consolidation.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we act on staff reports, uh, bullet point uh, two. And she gave us an update and I would make the motion that we um, move forward to dissolve the architectural review committee and consolidate that under the planning commission.
Is this my motion? Is there a second? All right. It's moved and seconded. Any comments on that motion?
It's just a quick comment. I just look forward to seeing the specifics of it. Those were the pieces that I had questions about how it transfers. So no problem. We just want to see how that would transfer.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number three, doesn't seem like there's much, but I want to give an opportunity for the council to weigh in. Any additional thoughts as it relates to HPC and um, MCAC? Good.
Basically same thing there, wanting to see how that comes together because of the historical portion of it being merged into the museum and cultural arts parks. Just want to see how that goes, but I will go ahead and make a motion.
I don't think we need a motion on this one.
You don't need a motion?
Yeah. Okay. It'll come back to.
I was thinking.
Did you have anything?
No, I was just going to say, I'm still curious about um, hearing from staff in terms of how they explore what needs to shift, if it's even possible. And I think that uh, definitely more in the technical standpoint. Mills Act is, is part of that statutory requirements, the skills, abilities, and is it going to work? So still a lot of questions.
Any comments on this side? Yeah, I, I concur with my colleagues' comments on this one. I, I would just encourage staff to be creative around finding solutions. I think one of the things I brought up last time was even considering some of the other boards, commissions and committees to take on some of the duties and not just thinking about the combining of the two. So um, yeah, that's my comment. I do have one question on this. Do we have a sense of when this will be able to come back to council?
Honestly, I don't have a sense right now. I apologize. No, the, the, you're talking about the HPC right now.
Only reason why I ask is because if, I think one of the ideas was some of the functions going to the library board. And if that were to happen, it would require an, um, a ballot initiative. And so I just wanted to make sure that if we were moving in that direction, that we could do it in time to put it on the ballot.
Yeah. I, I think it's this analysis, we're rethinking it a little bit more based on council's feedback as well as some internal discussions about maybe the best way is to continue both of those committees and maybe reduce frequency of meetings, other ways to maintain efficiency. But perhaps a merger may or may not be the best approach. We'll bring it back, but there's no urgency on this item.
Okay. Okay. With that, we will move to the fourth item. The fun one, potential term limits for boards, commissions and committee members. So go ahead and open up to the council, please.
Yeah, I can do a full court press, but I don't know if we're leaning that way or another. So I don't know where the other council members are. But I'll just state my perspective is, I think we already have um, the term limits. It's built into the system. Everyone gets four years and then they're reappointed if they want to stay. But there's a process with um, a review, the ad hoc committee that reports to the full council. And so if it's not working out and we see a conflict with that person, there's no guarantee that they're going to be reappointed. So I, I feel comfortable in the process of not having term limits because we already have term limits. I want to point out that the governance policy that we have approved previously and reiterated tonight is an ad hoc meeting that's a standing committee for interviews for the process of selection, working with staff and the city clerk. And that's the mayor and the vice mayor. And then they make the recommendations to the full council. And so it comes to the, the remaining three on the council. So the five council folks are hearing the recommendation. And there's another layer where the full council votes, whether it's a new person, whether it's a reappointment. So it's not that some callers have said selections by just the ad hoc, that's not true. The ad hoc is making recommendations to the council. And the council is making the selection of the individuals that have applied. So it's an important distinction. So I heard that, I think, a couple of times, last time and this time. So it's not a few council members making an appointment. It's the full council. So the, the term limits, I've spoke to, and I think that um, if the person on a board, and I'll just say uh, uh, the planning commission um, has done four years. And it's getting back to the staff that it's not working out or their attendance is in question. We have the ability to watch all the planning commission meetings. We can see the performance. We can speak through the city manager to obtain the information from staff about a performance issue that might have been identified by a member of any board and commission. And so that's, that's how the council, this way I see is the council's connection to ensuring that we have competence, skills and abilities that are being demonstrated on that board and commission. And if the, the performance is not where it needs to be, we have a way to deal with that. And I think that that's happened in the past. And I was here when we had um, three members that were not reappointed. And so there is a process for the full council to take a vote and to not automatically have an individual reappointed. And also if it's not working out in midterm, uh, the council can take action and cancel that council or that council that commissioned members um, attendance based or canceled their participation based on some cause, attendance, performance. So it isn't that the council is without choices there. So I don't think that we need term limits. I think what we can cover, what we need to do is to oversee the functioning of all of the boards and commissions and we can watch out for performance. And we can reappoint those qualified and those that are not qualified and not doing a job. We're looking out to the community and interviewing others and we'll make a different appointment.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Please, Councilor Garcia.
So I'm going to take a slightly different take here. I, I think that um, we do need term limits for the following reasons. I think this is not about removing people, but rather creating that space and opportunity for folks in the community who have maybe just imagined uh, being active in their community. This would be an opportunity. So um, this would create the ongoing um, space, right? For, for folks to participate, uh, removing the discretion from any of us, future councils, right? To, to determine who's, who's done and who's not. It'll be baked into the system. And then again, it, it continues that opportunity for folks um, to be able to participate um, in their community. And I, I hear quite a bit about um, the need to retain knowledge and, and expert, a certain expertise and that kind of thing, which I, I think is great. And yes, we should try to protect that and nurture that. But I think we've all been there where we join boards, commissions, groups, neighborhood groups, whatever that is. We, we go in not necessarily knowing what we, we're going to be expecting. And we shouldn't close the opportunity for folks who want to be active in their community just because they don't have a, a very specific knowledge um, that some might think is required to participate in, in any of these boards and, and commissions. So um, that's the opportunity for folks who have participated in boards and commissions to step up as mentors and provide that guidance. Even if it's from, from the public, right? From, from the public perspective, um, to try to support these new members in trying to bring them up to speed with, with the knowledge that's needed um, to be productive in those, uh, in those groups. I heard about vacancies. There are vacancies now. This is not an issue relating to term uh, limits. I think it's more of an issue with engagement. And that's something that um, we have to continue working on, not only in, in the context of boards and commissions, but just in general. How do we engage uh, more closely and, and more, uh, with more intention? Uh, our residents um, to be more involved in, in the decision-making process that impacts their neighborhoods. And, and one last thing, uh, in, in terms of the vacancies as well. I think there's an opportunity here with the city academy starting up. That could potentially be a, a place to recruit for boards and commissions moving forward. That's where you can identify folks who are really interested in um, participating in, in community uh, groups and, and trying to gauge that interest there and also start building that enthusiasm for when the time comes to apply for boards and commissions. So I, I would support term limits for these reasons.
Okay. Who would like to go next?
I just want to make a comment first on the, the notice and the special meetings. Because it, it was of concern with the um, Rainbow Art Crosswalk. We had two days notice and then the ordinance, we only had 24 hours notice. So the community was concerned about that process. I was concerned about that process. So I, I hear what they're saying and I think we should take care. We had been talking about adding on a third regular meeting. That, that had been mentioned and maybe we need to do that. But if we're going to use the special meetings for things that appear to, to the public to be more routine, we, we really should struggle to give them, even though it's not legally required. They, we really should ask the staff to stretch and do the agenda in the 72 hours than a normal reg, regular meeting would have provided them. So I, I think we need to be cognizant of, of what we're hearing from the public, both at that meeting and this meeting. The perception is out there that it's not enough time. And I think we need to respond to that. Let me. On term limits, I agree with the majority of the public that's speaking up. I think we have a form of term limits in the every four year review and whether they get renominated. I do agree with Mr. Brassfield to try to keep things simple when we can. Uh, I do, I'm concerned about the number of volunteers coming forward. As one public person said, it's a difficult economic time and not everybody can give. So there's limitations on the, on the public contributing their time. So I'm concerned about that. And um, I think the city has the most choice if we don't limit it. And that's what I want. I want the city, I want the council to have the most options that we can have. So we could get the best volunteers. These are volunteer positions. These are, these are not paid positions, but some have a stipend. So um, I would be voting against term limits.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Barber.
Well, I mean, I think there's, there is pros and cons on both sides, but I do see that the new academy, I, I, that's one of the notes I actually have written down. Uh, the, the council member Garcia talked about is a new and, and, and um, a very active way to be able to engage for all of the boards and, and um, commissions, not just one. Because you get to learn about all the departments, you get to know, learn about your city. And then you can really gauge their interest um, there. But I think it needs to be a combination between retaining the, the knowledge, right? The institutional knowledge that goes with it, along with getting innovative and new ideas. I think the mixture, it's very helpful. I feel that uh, I, I understand that applicants after four years can reapply if they wish. But it's my understanding that we are not putting their names up. They would have to apply. Is that correct? Okay. So it's, it's up to them if they reapply. It's my understanding. But then I guess if you're looking at a, a point of where a person has been on it for, let's say eight to 10 years, basically looking at a decade, I would think by that time or even prior to, there would be some other people that would want to be able to come and contribute and to give to their city as well. So I, I, I can see some, some positiveness in having structure as opposed to having something that's a little less structured. So I, I would be in favor.
So a couple of things. I think about the experience of when it was just myself as mayor, um, interviewing folks. And my sense was that part of the pushback of me replacing individuals, and this was through the public comment that was given, was replacing, for some of the arguments that were made today, replacing folks that have been there for a long time. They have this institutional knowledge. Why are we changing it? And I think this kind of gets to the very essence of what drove me to try to bring this forward. Because similarly to those same exact arguments that we've heard from the public and from some of our colleagues here on the council, spoke against the idea of us moving forward with term limits for the council. And I would just point out that 80% of Monterey residents voted in favor of term limits for the council. I recognize that it's a little bit of a different beast, but I want to do this. I'm going to read the primary argument um, for measure X, the term limits measure. And I'm going to change the language so it, it fits for boards, commissions, committee members as opposed to the council. So term limits are a crucial step in enhancing our democratic process and ensuring a vibrant representative government. By allowing our boards, commissions and committee members to serve maximum of 12 years, we empower our community to embrace fresh perspectives and new ideas, fostering innovation and progress. Choices, choice is that at the heart of democracy. Implementing term limits opens the door for diverse voices to enter leadership positions, creating opportunities for individuals from different backgrounds and experiences to contribute to our city's future. When we restrict the tenure of our boards, commissions and committee members, we break the cycle of entrenched power and encourage a dynamic landscape where all citizens can aspire to lead. Furthermore, term limits can enhance accountability. When officials know they have a finite time to serve, they are more likely to focus on the needs of their constituents rather than prioritizing their own reappointment. This shift can lead more, can lead to more effective governance as leaders are motivated to act in the best interest of the community without the looming shadow of their reappointment. In this election, voting for the 12 year term limit is not just a vote for change. Actually, it wouldn't be this election. In this vote, um, it would not be a, a vote just to, for change. It is a vote for more inclusive and engaged democracy. By supporting this measure, we are championing the idea that every citizen deserves a voice in our government and that our city's leadership should reflect the diverse and dynamics, the dynamism of its people. So I just, I had pulled that up. I thought it was very relevant for the topic. I want to speak to a few more points that I heard reflected in the public comments today. The part of the concern that I have is it's a lot easier to keep people on that have already been doing it than change it. And that was kind of the point that I reflected on towards the beginning of my, my public comment. It's like you're swimming upstream. And there's value in that. So let's give that its due credit. The, the experience, that doesn't negate or belittle anybody else's views or experience in the city. And to say that there's not enough applicants, I mean, I've been doing this for the last three years now and the, and the interviews that I've participated in, we, the fair, fair majority of positions that have had vacancies or reappointments had a good sizable group of people apply for them. So the argument that there's not enough people applying is just not credible. In regards to finding people, I, I think to, to be, serve in the position, I think Esther pointed out in her comments, it's like, how, if, if we're concerned around longevity and that kind of transition, how do we as a community work together to help support the next generation or the next group of folks coming in as opposed to thinking that we have all the knowledge? Let's just keep it here and then wait until that person decides to leave. Then we have that vacancy and we're dealing with that problem then. This, I think, creates a greater opportunity for us to work together as a community and help uplift folks and create more of a community. And to say that, I, I kind of spoke to this a second ago, but to say that the knowledge that exists with those folks that have been longer-term serving individuals is more important than other views and perspectives, I think is unfair. I think we, we're a city of 30,000 people, 30,000 people. I think that there's plenty of intelligent and smart people that can step up in serving these roles and do a, a fine job. There was also this concern around folks not meeting the bill. And I would just suggest that if we need to, we can maybe create some additional criteria as it relates to appointing people to certain boards, commissions and committees. And it happens even after we do this election. And this happened last year. We, we, the council appointed somebody. It wasn't working out. And so we worked towards getting that person removed. And we can do that even in the middle of somebody's term. The council can make that decision. So if it's not working, whether we did it with term limits or not, we could work towards removing somebody. Yes. And then I, I would just offer, let's not reinvent the wheel. We can just marry the policy that was implemented for the council. So my suggestion would be looking at 12-year term limits. And similarly, similarly to what we did for the council, if nobody else applies, then that person that was currently serving in the, or had been serving in that position can continue serving in that role. So with that, that will be my motion is to direct staff to come back with a, I don't know if actually we need it to come back. Do we need it to come back?
Yeah, it, it would require ordinance amendments.
Okay.
So it'll come back.
Okay. So direct staff to bring an ordinance amendment back that would establish 12-year term limits with the condition that it would allow a incumbent to continue serving upon no other applicants. That's my motion. I think so. Do we need a motion or can these?
I think you understand the guidance.
No, it needs a mo-, it needs a motion because we're going to have different opinions.
Yeah, let's do the motion.
Under discussion.
Oh, I need a seconder. All right, please.
Okay. So you read the argument in favor for measure X, which was in 2024. Who was the author of that?
I was.
Okay. So I think it's important for you to say that that was what you wrote then.
Sure.
And is what you wrote now.
Yeah, I have no quorum for that.
Instead of it being like some phantom writer, it was you. So I want to make your-
I'm glad, I'm proud to have written that.
Okay, so. So it looks like there's probably going to be a majority and vote for term limits and the motion is 12 years. And I acknowledge that I think everybody that spoke today spoke against term limits for the reasons that were pretty specific and also the things that I spoke about, which was we already have a process, we, we already have term limits. Instituting a term limit here, it seems like it's somewhat necessary because we have an internal process already. Every four years, somebody is appointed and if they reapply, then we have an opportunity to say, thank you, but thank you for your service, but no. And then we select somebody else. So I don't know what the, I don't know what it accomplishes by saying 12 years, and I don't know how 12 years is an arbitrary number that makes the rest of this majority of the council feel good about it. I do agree that term limits at the state level is a good thing. But at a council level where we have the ability to manage this process every four years when the council makes their selections, it just seems kind of nonsensical and I just don't understand the rush. And I don't know if it's coming from a political ideology that some of the members of this council bring. I don't understand why the answers that I get from the three that are saying yes, that, that they want to do that, they sort of just talk right over the system as if we have a problem. We haven't identified a problem. We haven't got anyone on any of our boards and commissioners where we are without a process to change that. The ad hoc will take it on. The full council will accept the recommendations or make a change to the recommendations and the council majority will prevail. Whether we have performance issues or whether we want to have somebody go because they're performing very well, maybe they're an architect and they're outstanding. I think what we're going to be faced with at year 12, we're going to be saying, oh, it's so sad that that high-functioning person has to move aside. It's illogical to me, doesn't make sense to me. And we're ignoring fine statements that we received tonight from this audience and from the public. I disagree.
Okay, please.
So I, I can appreciate everything you said. But I also understand that out of 36,000 people, these are not just the only people that I'm hearing from. I can't speak for anybody else. So just because they're not here tonight or you don't hear them on the phone, on the Zoom, doesn't mean that they don't have a voice too. So it's not about having a problem, but it's also about streamlining and looking at policies prior to be, before they become any type of issue. So for me, it makes sense to have something that's already in place, a structure that's in place. And we are hearing and listening. That's why we're talking about if somebody doesn't show up, that the incumbent can still be able to apply. So unfortunately, you don't agree with me and that's okay. But that's kind of where I'm coming from. I, I still feel that I'm listening to other people that don't have time to come and don't have time to get on and do this. So yes, thank you.
Any other comments on this side?
Nothing I haven't said.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, my response is disappointing because it sounds like your additional comments don't provide much of a counterargument in adding to the debates.
Well, I can.
If you let me finish, please. I'm all about having a healthy debate conversation. But in everything that you just said, we already provided a response to. Your comments around political ideology is ridiculous. The only thing I'm going to say is that this is about creating space for new voices and diversity on the city and helping to create community by hopefully some of those folks that might have served a 12-year term experience, creating that space, helping to mentor and guide other folks in the community. So I've already said everything I had to say. It's just disappointing that you're not really adding much flavor to the debate at this point.
Well. So it's back to me. You're acknowledging me that I can speak now.
You can absolutely speak now.
So it's unusual that someone would be so judgmental about that you're saying my argument doesn't have any logical response to what you said. So you have your opinion, I have my opinion. So I would request that you at least show some decorum and allow diversity among the council where we can disagree. My arguments don't have to make sense to you. If you don't buy it, you usually don't. I understand that. But I was elected to represent a district and people have called me and spoke to me on this topic as well. So it's not that I'm making up my logical presentation. I have input from a lot of people. I don't see the basis for changing it. Because we haven't heard one single note of evidence that says we have a problem that we need to fix it. And you talk about diversity of applicants. I'm all for that. We will have lots of applicants. And the ad hoc committee will have an opportunity to interview all those applicants. And they will come back to this council and we will make a fair judgment and make those selections based heavily on the ad hoc work. So we're all about looking for quality and competence and opening the doors for new people. I've never said no to that. So it sort of sounds like you believe with your judgment that I'm closed-door, closed-minded and that I'm not about bringing in new people. And nothing could be further from the truth. My lens looks at competence, abilities, skills, and the ability to govern while seated on a board and a commission. My selection is based on competence, not trying to make change just for change sake because I believe that there's something better out there. We get to interview all the time and you can always make those choices to upgrade a board member. And I'm not denying that that's an opportunity. I just think that it's a waste of time going through this process to arbitrarily have term limits for something that we have already been granted the term limits to this body through our charter and our resolutions. And I disagree with you. That's all.
Okay.
But please don't judge me and criticize my logical presentation. It's mine. You have your own. We just disagree.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Let me just clarify. I respect your position and point of view, along with anybody else that disagrees with the direction that I feel like we should go in this. So I just wanted to clarify that. The only point that I was making was the points that you made after the motion was made was somewhat of a reiteration of the points that you had made earlier, but didn't counter the arguments that were in opposition to your position. So it doesn't help provide for me to say anything else. Like I can't really say anything else to your argument because you were reiterating things that were kind of already said, which is the only point that I was making. So I apologize if it felt like I was attacking your view, but that's not the case at all.
Well, I'll take that as you didn't intend to, but that's the way I took it.
Absolutely. I did not intend that. So with that, I will go ahead.
Hey, we go to motion, go to the, go to the motion because I think we want to make sure we understand the nuance of the 12 years. And also there was something else in there about 12 years, but if somebody wanted to reapply.
Yeah, maybe we could have.
So we could have somebody read that back.
Sure. What I have is that you would direct staff to come back with the legislation for 12-year term limits for the boards, committees and commissions. And with the exception that if nobody else applies after someone is termed out, then the incumbent could continue to serve. And I'm assuming that would be for one more term.
Okay, so discussion. What happens if the ad hoc has someone who is up for reappointment and nobody else has applied? Would you be faced with saying, well, they really aren't competent, but I'm going to appoint them anyway just because it's a vacancy? How do we provide that we might just go with a vacancy and re-advertise? And so what, what's the provision where we could do that?
I don't think anything prevents us from not making a selection and re-advertising.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not something, the way I interpret it, I'll say that it's not something that says, okay, then we just go with the, the default, if you will. We still have that opportunity to be able to say, okay, no, we're not going to go with either. We'll just keep it vacant until we find what we want. That's my interpretation.
Okay. And I would just say, said in humor, not trying to criticize, but that's kind of the logical reason why it sort of fits with what I was saying. We always have the choice to make sure that we appoint the people that are before us or move on. And having an arbitrary term limits doesn't guarantee that it's not going to, it's still within our control. But I don't have anything else.
I have nothing else to add to it either. So with that, we'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes three, two. With that, we'll go to item number three on the agenda, which is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter and submit public comment on the California Public Utilities Commission to reconsider the long-term water demand forecast and the proposed decision for application 2111024. The reason why this item was put on today's agenda is because the CPUC was going to be meeting tomorrow. That meeting has been postponed until August 14th. So we don't have to necessarily consider this today. We can push it back and allow more time for public feedback and input. Just wanted to kind of get a sense from the council about how you all feel about that.
I'd like to see it pushed back.
Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to continue this to August 5th meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. We'll open it for public comment. Anybody on Zoom, you can navigate to the raise hand function. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll do a countdown for folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And there's one person on Zoom. Let's go ahead and take that caller.
Hi, this is a telephone caller with the last three digits, eight, seven, four. You can unmute by dialing star six on your telephone. And go ahead, please.
Hello, Mr., hello, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Hi, this is Daniel Armadillo. I'd like to talk on this issue. Actually, about the issue of having a surprise meeting, a special meeting. And once again, I respect your authority, your, your word is very important to us. You, you represent a very beautiful community. And sometimes the opinion of other members will tend to have their opinion, kind of interfere with your authority. And with the water issue coming up, it's nice to know that it is continuing, continuing to be looked at and developed. And I hope that you stay strong with your ability to function in one of the most beautiful communities in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any other discussion on this item? All right, roll, uh, roll call. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With that, we will go to closed session, public comment on closed session agenda items. We have two items. The first is closed session number four, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957B1, city manager. And the second is closed session item number five, which is conference of legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956, tac 9D1. Anybody in the chamber, sorry, anybody on Zoom, you can use a raise hand function. Anybody in the chamber? Seeing that there's nobody else here except for staff, we're going to do a countdown for folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have one person on Zoom. Let's go ahead and take that caller.
I believe that this is Beatty. You can unmute and you can go ahead.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I have a comment on item number four regarding the city manager. The city manager closed Kaia Principale this year without public process or council approval. You and the public were not informed about it. Last year, neither the staff report nor the agent, agenda description disclosed a street, a street closure. You voted on a consent agenda item for ADA ramps and adding and deleting stop signs. The city manager is also pushing massive densification of Monterey residential neighborhoods, exceeding even SB 9 for unit per lot mandates. SB 9 destroys the environment, trees, vegetation, neighborhood's character and appearance, and jeopardizes public safety, including the ability to evacuate areas of Monterey, as well as in the other cities throughout the state. areas of Monterey as well as in the other cities throughout the state. A lawsuit by five Southern California cities thankfully has put this in limbo with the judge ruling that SB nine is unconstitutional as applied to charter cities. Yet last month, when staff presented their hyper-dense initiative to the planning commission, staff failed to inform the planning commission about the lawsuit and the judge's ruling and misrepresented the current situation. There's nothing the city can do. The city does have options, including possible participation in the lawsuit by the other cities. But the city manager's administration is pushing this destructive densification. The city manager also has selected timber industry contractor Dudek purportedly for fire mitigation plans. Dudek has a conflict of interest. The company it works for kills trees and vegetation for wood pellet production. And Dudek advocates the same techniques without ecological input that is destroying Monterey's forest habitat, abusing trees, killing wildlife, and worsening fire danger by increasing wind. In addition, this administration has killed many of the public streets outside of this plan and allowed the Naval Postgraduate School to destroy the historic Monterey Forest on Del Monte Boulevard without protest. The administration has mislabeled agenda items with incomplete or vague agenda descriptions that obscure measures. The combining of boards and commissions is one example. It is also miscategorized public hearings as public appearance items, which avoids legal notice. And may the city manager recommend to consultants that have legal problems and a record of error-filled work, including Rincon, that I've amply listed errors and misrepresentations. This administration has fought efforts to strengthen the wireless ordinance. It's interesting to see the work product that Gail Carish produced for the city of Carmel and contrast that with what she produced for the city of Monterey. And her, in, in Carmel, she produced a strong wireless ordinance. This administration has also shoehorned a plethora of special meetings in the last few months and a mere twenty-four hours to research these non-emergency items before its special meetings. This is not at all satisfactory performance. It degrades governance. Thank you.
Hey, with that, we're going to close public comment on the closed session agenda items and go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Thank you.